Commissioner Hodges?
Here.
Commissioner Ryan?
Okay. If we can all stand, please, we'll say a pledge of allegiance and have a moment of silence. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Awards and proclamations.
Item 3.1, the day of August 2, 2017, is Professional Engineers Day in the city of Salina. Wayne Nelson, President of the Kansas Society of Professional Engineers, will read the proclamation.
Hello.
Good afternoon.
You're looking pretty spiffy.
Well, thank you very much. Proclamation. Whereas licensed professional engineers dedicated to applying scientific knowledge, mathematics, and ingenuity to develop solutions for technical, societal, and commercial problems while holding paramount the public health, safety, and welfare, and whereas Salina's licensed professional engineers have made significant contributions on a local, state, and national scale, and whereas Salina's economy has grown in part because its licensed professional engineers are instrumental to our community, and whereas August 2, 2017, has been declared Professional Engineers Day by the Kansas Society of Professional Engineers in conjunction with the National Society of Professional Engineers, an organization founded in 1934 that represents the interests of more than 31,000 licensed professional engineers and those on the path to licensure who show the highest level of dedication to their profession in all 50 states and U.S. territories. Now therefore, I, K. J. Crawford, Mayor of the city of Salina, Kansas, do hereby proclaim August 2, 2017, as Professional Engineers Day in Salina and call upon all citizens to join me in this special observance. In witness thereof, I have hereunto set my hand and cause the seal of the city of Salina, Kansas, to be affixed this 24th day of July, 2017. K. Crawford, Mayor.
What would we do without engineers? What are you going to do this week? Any special activities?
Well, it'll be in a non-traditional mode. Activities will be the use of social media, Twitter, Facebook, Instagram, LinkedIn. Engineers and their employees are encouraged to post photos or video telling why you decided to become a professional engineer. I took a photo myself with a message board at the NSPE conference last week, and it'll be posted as we get closer to the actual date. I checked before I came down. They haven't posted any new photos or videos yet, so. As I also learned this afternoon that Governor Brownback has signed on July 18 a proclamation declaring PE Day in Kansas.
Great. Congratulations.
Thank you.
And I'll give you your proclamation. Put a little frame around it, hang it in there. Thank you. Okay, we'll go on to Citizens Forum. Are there any citizens here who would, who have anything they'd like to bring before the commission? And if so, please give your name and your address. Even Judy.
Even Judy. Judy Larson, South 10th. I have been asked to bring something to your attention. The Citygo drivers are having a really, really hard time on Belmont because of the construction, because of the destruction, and because of the cones. You can't turn left, you can't turn right, and you can't drop anybody off. And they're having a really hard time doing their work because of the mess that is Belmont. The fire station at Belmont is not as accessible as what they need it to be, and they have dug up part of the actual street. They put cones so you have to go left, and then you can't go left because you have to go right. It's just a mess. And the Citygo drivers asked me to ask you to please check into it. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Judy.
Vince Weber, 2363 Chapel Ridge Road, and a very new member of the community. There was earlier conversation about human resources and the pay raise for 2018, and I decided to do a little look at that, so wanted to make a recommendation to change that. Currently, there's a proposal for a 2% across-the-board pay raise, and then a 2% to be used as merit pay. And the reason stated for that increase in pay was that the employees were underpaid. Well, if they're underpaid, then instead of putting it towards merit pay, I recommend it be directed at those positions that are most drastically underpaid. So with that, just as an example, I'm a very professional employee, working hard, but either through opportunity or through circumstances, I don't get a merit increase. Great member of the team, but I don't get a pay raise. For the last couple of years, I would've gotten a 2% increase. But someone who might've been closer to equally paid, they get a 5% increase. Now, if you ran that out five years, I'm treading water below pay at around a 10%, 10.5% pay raise. 5% times two years, you get some, you know, interest on that. But the person who's close to pay could be getting a 27.5% pay raise. Whoa, that's 17.5% more, 17%, than the person who's underpaid. So I ask that you not leave those people who are significantly underpaid behind. Not saying that the merit pay is not deserved, but when you're talking about $600,000 in an increase, I believe that's what was in the 2017 estimate for the current pay raise. As an example, I did some phoning and got online, there's 84 police officers. As of last week, one day last week, a snapshot, you were 15 vacancies. That's 1/6 of your workforce. So when you take a look at underpaid, you would expect long-term vacancies, you would expect a large number of vacancies, and you would expect high turnover. As a retired federal law enforcement officer, I'm very interested in this, and I've been following this around the state, and every single, I've been about a half a dozen employment fairs either in Wichita, Topeka, other locations, and they're desperate for that same pool of high-qualified people. If you don't need all 84, then cut back on the bullets. If, on the other hand, your budget model is to replace 1/6 of your workforce, please don't. These professionals invest in the community, learn the community, and we don't want to train the professionals for another organization. I recommend you keep them here. So again, I ask that you take a look at gearing that promotion or that resource to the most needy of our professional people who make this community so good as it is. I'm done. Did you have any questions for me?
Thank you for your comments.
Commissioner, there's a couple of things you might find helpful. The pay plan, when we address the across-the-board merits, is not related in any way to any class of employee that would be underpaid. We use a reclassification tool for that because we will look at different pay, or employee groups, try to, at times, look at statistical information, salaries in other comparable communities for similar jobs, things like that. And so the 2% across the board is basically, we don't call it a COLA because it's not always attached to the CPI. We try to stay close there so that people don't fall behind. The merit is truly that. It's for meritorious performance. You have to earn that. We feel that's important in a performance system. With that said, though, if you don't get a merit for five years, you shouldn't be here because you're probably in deep trouble. And I don't, I bet you I can't find an employee in our organization that has not received a merit over a five-year period each year. As a matter of fact, if you're into about one or two years, you're probably in pretty deep trouble. So the employees that we have, you will see typically 2% is the S, is basically the average in that 3% range. That's how we budget, is the average, so it's about 2%. So that's really pretty good. So very few of our employees would have a 1%. Most would have a 2, and you'd have, some that would have a 3. And so you're generally seeing your workforce pay go up because of that. So keep that in mind. The other thing is, is we did, from a police department perspective, now, I can, I could say, when I look at the value of the job for public safety, I could always justify paying more. I don't think it'd be difficult to do that. But again, looking at comparability, we've made quite a few adjustments in the last couple of years to try to elevate the pay somewhat, and so we're, your starting police officer's gonna make right around $40,000, which is pretty good when we looked at comparable pay. Now, does that mean if you wanted to pay $60,000 that you could feel that, you might be able to? I don't know. There are other factors than salary, but I'm not saying you could always pay enough to get anybody to come for whatever period of time. But when you look at a full pay plan, we're talking about entry-level salary right there. And then you have, you have to deal with those that have already been here so many years. In fairness, if you're gonna pay a new person, I'm gonna say $50,000 or $60,000, and I'm not saying it's wrong, I'm just saying if you do that, what about the person who was here for a year, for two years, for five years, for 10 years? Well, you better elevate them because they feel like they've been here, been trained, have more experience, maybe more valuable than the entry-level person. So ratchet everyone up, you're into supervision, and before long, you're going all the way up. So you're looking at a full, complete departmental approach if you change the bottom too much because of compression. So you have to deal with that, too. So we've, we've tried to dance the dance and try to do what we can to bring that up, and I think when you look at our comparable communities, we're in pretty good shape. Now, like I said, you can always throw money at something and probably fill it, and it is a challenge, but pay is not the only reason that a, an organization is down employees. There are many, many other reasons. Police is really difficult, given national reputation issues that unfortunately, a few bad apples, unfortunately, get some of that attributed to very, very good departments like ours, which is fully accredited and very professional. And that's very unfortunate. That makes it difficult because it sours people to want to get into the police profession, and it makes it difficult for us to do, and you can't necessarily pay your way out of that. And then there's also retention, and retention issues can be pay-related, but they can have a lot of other aspects to them as well. So retention, quite honestly, right now, I think we've done a lot on the recruitment side. I don't know if we've done everything, but we've done a lot. The retention is where we're focusing on to see how can we retain. Salary's one piece sometimes, but it's definitely not the only piece. So we're trying to look and balance and keep all those things in mind as we go, just so it gives you kind of an idea of context.
Thank you for that. I was just gonna say the national news has probably prevented, scared off a lot of police officer candidates, I'm sure. Okay, any other comments from, under Citizens Forum? We're still under Citizens Forum, so. You have any comments? Okay. Public hearings and items scheduled for a certain time? We have none, so we'll go on to the consent agenda.
Item 6.1, approve the minutes of July 17, 2017. And item 6.2, award contract for Brick Street Repair, project number 70011, De Davis Concrete Construction, and the amount of $75,212.68 with a 10% construction contingency.
Okay, are there any items on the, under the consent agenda Commissioner wants to pull for any reason? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
Madam Mayor, move approval of the consent agenda as read.
Second. Okay, I have a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda. Is there any discussion on that? Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose, same sign. Okay, we'll go on to administration.
Item 7.1, second reading, ordinance number 17-10892, repealing the 2012 International Energy Conservation Code and specified provisions of the Uniform Mechanical Code and International Residential Code directly related to the 2012 International Energy Conservation Code and adopting the 2009 International Energy Conservation Code and local amendments.
Okay, ordinance 17-10892 is passed on first reading on July 17, 2017, since at time no comments have been received. And I entertain a motion on second reading?
Madam Mayor, I move that we approve on second reading, ordinance number 17-10892.
Second.
Okay. I have a motion and a second on second reading for ordinance number 17-10892. Is there any discussion? Okay, roll call, please.
Commissioner Blanchard?
Aye.
Commissioner Davis?
Aye.
Commissioner Hodges?
Aye.
Mayor Crawford?
Aye. Item 7.2.
Item 7.2, resolution number 17-7448, authorizing the mayor to enter into an agreement for beverage vending and advertising rights with Pepsi-Cola Bottling Company of Salina Incorporated at designated city of Salina facilities.
Mr. Cotton?
How's everybody doing today?
We're here.
We're here. I had some follow-up from, from Mahaska to clarify some of the questions that we had last time. After speaking with Jim Frush, pricing was accurate, and pricing from Mahaska is firm as it was in the original proposal. With the exception of some bottled water and juice offerings, all product comes in 20-ounce resealable bottles. We have ultimate control on what goes into the vending machines. However, if we have low sales due to the offerings, then Mahaska may request to move out the machines. Jim indicates that all burden of maintaining the equipment, purchasing of the equipment to go into our facilities, and stocking the machines lies with them and not the city, and therefore that ties back to their pricing. Any other? Did I answer everybody's questions from a few weeks ago?
If the vending machines were removed, then items for sale would be for sale at the concession stand just by hand, so to speak.
In this instance, if, if, if product didn't sell, then we would try to come up with product that would sell and would move. That would leave, however, if they ended up asking to remove the machines because of lack of product sales, then we would need to find another alternative to having beverages available Monday through Thursday, when we didn't have events in the building.
Are they anticipating more sales through the machines or through concession sales at tournaments, you know, through the windows, so to speak? Do you have any, or do you have an idea of which is the?
Until, until we get the fieldhouse fully ramped up, that would be a very difficult question to answer. I can tell you that in the short term, meaning this fiscal year, we will probably have more sales through machines until we get the word out and we have everybody aware of our facility, such as the visit with U triple SA the other day. They're highly impressed with the facility, but they wouldn't schedule anything with us till next year. They already have their current schedule in place.
Exactly. Understand, some of the fee that's built into the pricing per unit includes the providing the vending machines, taking care of them, it's delivering, stocking.
Stalking it, fixing it when it breaks.
Chris, could you talk on that one as a follow-up? Could you talk to the potential volume of vending machines across all of our facility locations and the average cost of a machine? The thought being is, is if we're on our own and we want vending machines, we're gonna have to buy them?
Correct. So as of right now, we could, we could fit up to four machines into the fieldhouse as it stands right now. If we were to purchase the machines ourself to stock those, on the low end, we're looking at around $6,000 a machine. On the high end, up to $14,000 to $20,000 per machine, depending on we, what we want it to sell. That also puts all the cost of maintaining the machines back on us or whoever we contract to take care of them. I would like to see machines in more areas than we currently have them. We've had a lot of requests for product by the Bill Burke, I'm sorry, the Oakdale Tennis Courts. We already have machines at, at Bill Burke. We've had requests for machines at the soccer complex. So there's other areas that I'm exploring right now to put machines in. I would not like to try to find the money to purchase those in my existing budget.
It'd be expensive.
That would be expensive.
Very expensive.
Now, if, just two questions more. If, whatever reason, the machines were removed, does that reset the contract price?
I think if the machines were, were removed, then we would probably need to rebid the, we wouldn't have any machines. If I took the machines out, then I, I'd come back and we'd have to figure out another solution.
Right, because part of this is not just for the machines, but it's also to provide the product.
Buying the product. So if, if I were to get into this myself, if you came to me and you said, hey, Chris, we want you to buy the machines, you, we want you to take care of them, and that would mean I'd have to come up with a line item budget to purchase sodas or Gatorades or waters or whatever we decide to put in them, plus candy bars, plus Slim Jims, plus everything else. That would fully fall on us, lost control, when finding somebody to fix the machines when they break, it would all come back on the city.
Right, but the, the kind, the price for the product itself would be rebid if there were no machines? I don't foresee that being the case.
If we needed to get our own machines, then, I understand what you're saying. If we need to get our own machines, this contract would still, if we had to buy our machines, this contract would still obligate us to purchase from Mahaska.
Commissioner, are you asking that if, under the agreement with Mahaska, if they should choose at one or multiple locations to pull certain machines, whether or not we, in essence, have a right to put in our own machines or if we wanted to?
Or if, or if the sales were low and they said, this really isn't worth it, and we just decided to go with it?
Could it end the agreement with Mahaska?
Right, if we decided to go without machines and just sell through the window completely. We'd still buy it from them, but with the price be?
We would have, we would have that option, yes, sir. But this contract would mean that we would need to purchase products from them. There would still need to be Pepsi products, and we would still need to purchase, purchase from Mahaska, yes, sir.
Okay, but would that price then be renegotiated? And that part of this pricing is inflated up because of the, they're providing the machines and the maintenance for the machines?
I haven't specifically addressed that with Mahaska. I can definitely do that.
And the second one is made just, you know, I guess some words tripped me up. On page three, it says, we're talking about offering, healthy offerings. The staff will have the opportunity to help direct the offerings and the beverage dispensers. Now, I was under the impression before that we have total control over selection of the offerings.
We do. We'll just direct, we'll direct what goes in there.
So we help direct or we direct? Because help-direct means we're not the only one making the?
We'll let them know what we want in the machines, yes, sir. We will direct.
We have the authority to direct. I think what we're gonna have to weigh is, is that you have, as you know, you have a combination of products in there, some of which are healthier products, some of which are not. If, potentially, if we put only healthy products in there, sales could be down, it's possible, because we've talked to others that have had vending machines, and that's a possibility. So a mix is probably gonna be best to try to do a, have a balance of decent sales and also a solid, healthy products offering. And so I'm not sure what that mix will be at this point in time, but under the agreement, we do have the authority to require whichever of the products they have. We can tell them which product that we would like in our facilities.
Certainly take advantage of their expertise and experience and that.
Sure, yeah, they can give us good insight on potential sales of each, and then, and there are quite a few, there are some, what, kind of what we call healthy or maybe not unhealthy products that are pretty attractive to athletes that I think makes, make really good sense, that probably fit that niche as well.
If there's some, a destruction of those machines in any way, they take care of it then under this agreement?
Yes, ma'am.
Is that right?
Yes, ma'am.
I mean, because you always have that kind of thing to worry about.
And we do.
Activities like that. Okay. Any other questions?
Did the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board have a recommendation for us in terms of the contract?
Their recommendation was to go along with what staff recommended.
To proceed with the, with the contract, right?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. And then my other question for you and for staff is, has there been any thought to developing, I don't know, kind of a concession policy or some sort of aspirational goals in terms of, yes, I mean, personally, I'd like to see it be all, you know, water and juices and stuff, but I understand that's not, that's not going to sell. But has there been any thought, since we, we have so many different facilities with vending machines and concessions, that we at least maybe look at putting together some kind of a food policy?
No, ma'am, there's been no thought about that.
One last, just so you can sum it up, I'd asked it before, just to make sure I'm straight, if we decided to contract with a food concessionaire for tournaments or on whatever basis, if that food provider had a certain theme and part of that included beverages that Mahaska does not provide, just nowhere in their line of products, does the concessionaire then have the right to bring in that type beverage from elsewhere? And the only example I could use would be a fruit smoothie, which is not bottled, but is probably a better example, I just can't think of one, but, but with, is there any restriction on what a food concessionaire could bring in that's, if it's not offered by?
I would say in that respect that I would, if they're, if they wanted to bring something in that Pepsi, Mahaska did not have an offering for, I would have that discussion with Mahaska. While I don't necessarily think it would be an issue, but I can't speak for Mahaska. I mean, if they don't offer it, they don't offer it. I'm not gonna, I won't tell somebody that comes in to do an event that if they have something that they don't, they don't sell, they can't bring it, but I would still run that by Mahaska first. It's not exclusively spelled out in the agreement, no, sir.
Okay, from the legal perspective, so the attorney come up to a sage, I figured sneak that one in before he started, but does this give them the right to block any other beverages from?
It does. Good afternoon, Commissioners. This agreement in section one does give Mahaska the exclusive right to supply all beverage items, and that is then, some examples follow, but the all beverage items exclusive right would seem to preclude anyone from suggesting that it didn't cover beverage types that aren't sold by Mahaska. So if Mahaska does not supply a particular type or brand of beverage, that fact alone would not likely enable the city or a concessionaire to bring in that type of beverage that Mahaska doesn't supply. That could be addressed in the contract, but it is currently not addressed, and I believe as written, this would preclude anyone from bringing in any beverages that Mahaska doesn't sell.
Erin, that is specifically directed, or that the grant of exclusive right is specifically related to those city, I'm gonna say city facilities in general that fall under the definition in the, oh, I think it's, well, of facilities, there's a definition of facilities in an exhibit, and it's related to those. Now, I think those are most of our, probably most of our locations, but if they're not on the list of facilities, then there's not an exclusive right, is my understanding?
That's correct. It, it only applies to Bill Burke, Salina Fieldhouse, Salina Soccer Complex, Municipal Golf Course, and East Crawford Recreation Area.
Right, I'm just, I guess I'm trying to protect the interest, if we decide to get a concessionaire in there for food at some point in the future, if that concessionaire wants to provide carrot, kale, asparagus juice, for whatever reason, God knows, and Mahaska doesn't offer that, but it's a very big part of this concessionaire's offering, that concessionaire would then be prohibited from bringing in?
Yes, if it's, if it's at a facility that's under the definition of facilities in the exhibit, then I, I believe that's correct.
That's correct, yes.
The other thing is, is even though that type of product, which of course we'd all stand in line for, would be significantly different from maybe any other product there, I would imagine when you're talking to a beverage person, there can be some fine descriptive lines between product A and product B, which to the layperson might be the same, but there's a slight, there, there's, one's a derivative that's similar to another, maybe one's carbonated, one's not, but the same flavor, different brand, you know, that kind of stuff, and you're probably gonna be splitting hairs if we tried to allow, to say, if you don't provide a particular product, then you have to allow another vendor to provide that product, you're probably gonna be splitting hairs as to whether that is a, the same, a similar product or a different product, just based on descriptive aspects of it, is my guess, at some point, unless you have a really good definition of what a different product might be or what a like product might be.
I'm asking out ignorance, would that exclusive right be a hindrance to a specialty food concessionaire coming in or potential one, or is that something where we need a provision to negotiate that with the concessionaire in those unusual circumstances?
I would, I would simply say that we ask Mahaska for an understanding that if they don't offer it or don't offer anything remotely close to it, that we'd be allowed that loophole to let them in and sell it, but again, that, that would be up to Mahaska to say yes or no on that, and then we would have to go with whatever direction they want to do. I'd come back before you and say they said yes, or they said no, and then we could go from there.
Now, turn to the left. I mean, it may be a low probability occurrence, I don't know if it's important to, because this is a five-year contract, and we're not gonna revisit the issue of food concessionaire till later this year, maybe even next year, but I wouldn't want there to be a difficulty with the concessionaire. I don't have a problem with. I don't have a problem with their providing serve, but I could just, I guess I'm in that group that drinks other stuff now, and most of what I drink does not have bubbles and it doesn't have caffeine, so it's, you know, and you can only drink so much water, but it's, it's, you know, if there was a concessionaire there, there might be something that didn't come in a bottle that they'd want to serve.
Yeah, and, and I could see even a, a vendor from like M A Y P or whatever, I mean, maybe somebody's got a Jamba Juice type of product that they bring in. I mean, I would just, you know, maybe it's better to ask for forgiveness later and just go ahead and, and go with it, but I, I can see where you're saying that we might want to be quite clear on that. I'm not talking about the difference between, say, a minute made lemonade or a hand squeezed lemonade versus a sparkling lemonade or whatever, but if you have a significantly different product line, it might be nice to, to, to be able to offer that.
If, well, I, I don't want to speak for Mahaska, and I don't know, is there a Mahaska representative here? For us, this is a pretty small item, but if you're, if, if I put on the hat and it says Mahaska, I want to get out of this seat and step into that seat. I don't think I'd want to do a deal with you if that, if that's so open, and the reason is, is because at any time you don't like my product, you're going to find a supplemental product or a replacement product that you're going to justify as being different, when in fact it's a direct head-to-head competitive product to push me out. So, I can't count on my volumes, I can't count on anything, I don't know why I would want to lock up anything with you, and at that point, we may very well just be going back to spending $200,000 on machines and trucking our product back and forth every day and that type of thing, and that's, that's the problem with that is, now, again, we could ask them, but if, if I'm the one selling you the product, that's the perspective I'm coming in at, is there's got to be some things that are locked up in order for me to do my projections and to be sure that my product will be sold, because whether it's a formal lemonade or it's just a sports drink, whatever that is, or carbonated drink or non-carbonated drink, that's why I say, we could easily split hairs with just about any language in here and say, oh, we can provide this product because of the language we put in your agreement, and they're smart enough to know that, which means we could probably substitute along the way, about however we would like.
Well, I'm, I'm thinking of a concessionaire, food concessionaire who wants to produce his or her own beverage. Are those, if it's something that's made from scratch there, does that come under this contract?
It's any beverage that's sold, I would expect.
Any beverage, as this is written.
If we did that for the concession stands, then we probably should just have this one for the machines, and I don't know that by itself, what that does with pricing, what that does with other things, I, I don't know.
So, you could not have someone come in and do slushy, fruit slushies?
I would, I don't think so. I mean, as, I would go, I'd look at Erin again, but it doesn't appear that, I don't know if you want to do homemade anyway, but...
To the extent that that is a beverage item, we would be precluded from having someone come in and sell fruit slushies, and I, I think arguably it would be a beverage item, and if there's any desire to preserve that right, then we should, we should clarify it, because I think as written, covers all beverage items. It then goes on to provide an example of list, which includes sodas and ice and coffee and sports drinks, milk, dairy products, et cetera. So, if there is a desire to preserve any fruit smoothie rights or anything like that, it would be preferable to carve that out and be very clear that that's the intent.
I won't be an obstructionist, but I'm just curious in your opinions.
I have one question about this contract, and then just a general observation on the entire, on the entire contract. And my one question is on section seven, compensation to the city, the vending compensation, the vending compensation. You know, earlier conversations we had were about providing food options and so on, that would tend to be more of a food source of some sort of substance versus just a candy bar or a Slim Jim or what, or whatever. What is the, what is the provision here that says that the, the contractor shall not be required to pay the city any commission on sandwiches sold from the vending machines? There's sandwiches in vend, in these vending machines?
There can be, and, and I do believe that comes back to the short lifespan of the sandwiches and the fact they change them out so much and they already take a loss on the ones that they remove.
Oh, okay.
Probably throw a lot of them out.
So, would that, would that, would that mean that they only stock the vending machines with sandwiches at certain times, like for, when they're expecting a lot of traffic, or...
No, not necessarily. I mean, just like, like the break, the break machine here has some different food choices, you know, they'd have a refrigerated machine that kept cold items in it, sandwiches being one of those. I think they would stock the machine, or they would specifically stock the sandwiches based on the, what I'd call the life expectancy of the sandwich.
Okay. Like I said, one, one, one small little contract. The other one is, I kind of want to get away from, from picking into the, into the contract because I just, I, I see that as getting further away from policy and more into just picking that part of it. I, I got, I, I like, I like your type A, B, and C, but now that we're putting this into practice, the policy into practice, I, I want to know two things. One is that would it be easier to adjust a policy to reflect the fact that I would prefer that items like this be taken care of administratively and not through the governing body? Would it be easier to take that route or to take a route on this to say, one thing that would make me a lot more comfortable on something like this, with, and probably my choice, my first choice for a solution to what we're dealing with here, I prefer to see this project taken to a three-year commitment. That, for one reason, it provides us a lot of flexibility in the sense that this is a, a big part of, this is a new thing to us. I, I think three years is a better time to really kind of see how things work, especially in things like a fieldhouse, where we have someone else talking about potential concessions and whether or not we get a huge rise in restaurants downtown and, and alternative food options at the fieldhouse are unnecessary, or whether that doesn't happen. I'd like to be, I'd like to be able to have that on a three-year commitment versus, versus five. And then also, I think what that does also, kind of goes back to my first question, it takes us into a type B scenario versus a type C, to where I think the city manager and yourself are able to better work out the details of what works and what doesn't rather than a governing body. So, I guess my, my preference would be that, I appreciate the work that you've gone through to work this out, the, the policy and everything, and certainly Mahaska in, in wanting to participate in this and, and, and take some of that burden, and also others that have expressed an interest in, in concessions and so on, and, and helping revenues and cash flow some of our facilities. But I, I just feel like we need to let Mahaska, if they're going to take the business risk in that end of it, decide what their, what their offerings are going to be. We need to let you as the Parks and Rec, trying to figure out your budget and what revenues we need and, and make decisions based on what's best for, for, for making those budgets work, and I think, hand in hand with the, with the city manager, and I just, I'm not, I, I don't want to be a part of that. I, I want to be a part of the policy that says, hey, I want to hand you that responsibility and you go do that, and, and not bring it back to us or future commissions to decide on what drinks get, get placed. I think that we're really getting way too down into the weeds on that, and so, I don't know what the, but if, if, if we want to get a contract going with these guys, my preference would be make it, take it from a five-year to a three-year. Would you see any problem for Mahaska in that respect to saying, yeah, we'd be willing to go along with three, or no, five's the deal killer?
No, and the, and the only thing that I would add to that is, is where 10 years came from, is we are already in a 10-year contract with Mahaska at Bill Burke that ends on April 30th of 2020, so that was done several years ago. So, what the current contract, this contract do would morph the two together. So, what we would need to do is either, A, I would need to get Mahaska to agree to the Bill Burke end of things as well, which I'm sure they, they would, or we just do this contract for everything except Bill Burke and then let that contract expire, and then we bring, and when we do this in three years, we bring Bill Burke into the mix.
Chris, real quick question on that. The, the threshold on type B is less than three years duration and is less than $20,000 in value, and the value appears to be in the policy related to the value of the sponsorship or advertising. Do you know what the total value of the sponsorship or advertising piece is to see if it meets that criteria?
For the three-year term, it would be less than $10,000 on the actual sponsorship itself. That doesn't necessarily tie to any commissions that we would get off of sodas, but the sponsorship self, its piece, piece itself would be less than $10,000.
I think that was the intent of the policy piece, so.
Right.
So, it's really up to you. If you feel like three years is fine and you want us to handle it administratively, we can do that, that's not a problem.
I, I would agree with that because I, it just seems to me like Commissioner Blanchard is right.
Sure.
It's going to, we're going to, we're getting down to the nitty gritty stuff and probably it's not necessary.
Yeah, and I agree, it does give us some flexibility because especially at the fieldhouse, we need to see how it works.
Right.
Even though we've dealt with Mahaska before, this is a different facility that would give us some, us opportunity if we need to change up something for the longer term, and maybe as we come back, possibly there's different competition as well, we don't know, but it gives us ability to move better. So, we're, we're good with that.
A little more flexibility that way.
Yeah. So, it works for us. If you would rather do that, then we can, that'll be our walking orders and we'll go take care of it.
Just one last question. If for whatever reason, for certain events, we decided to sell alcohol at the fieldhouse, does alcoholic beverages exempted from this contract?
Well, I don't know.
Different provider, does Mahaska sell alcohol?
Mahaska doesn't sell alcohol unless, unless given direction to, I don't plan on asking for alcohol to be sold at the fieldhouse, but obviously I will do whatever I'm instructed.
We might want to have it for receptions, private parties or whatever, I mean, not that we have plans to do that now, but...
Commissioners, when you look at the, the grant of exclusive rights, and I'll read it to you, and I think I understand what it's saying, and Erin can nod his head, yes or no, yeah, you're right, or you're, you don't know what you're talking about. It says, the city grants the contractor the exclusive rights to, A, supply for concession operations within the facilities, all beverage items, including but not limited to carbonated soft drinks, energy drinks, bottled water, iced tea drinks, coffee drinks, sports drinks, juices, milk or dairy products, or any other non-alcoholic beverage. So, it's listing all of those as a non-alcoholic beverage as a total category, and then it goes on to the vending machines, so it appears to me that their intent is, that does not expand to alcoholic beverages. That's, yeah. So, we would, if, if for some reason there was some type of an event, a social type activity, and the proper licensing was put in place and alcoholic beverages were to be served, it doesn't appear that this would interfere with that at all.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay. If you want to get public comment, and then I just have a procedural question for staff on, on a motion once we're to that point.
Is there public comment on, on this? Be happy to, to hear your comments. Give your name and address.
Karen Shade, 111 Wisconsin. From a hospitality standpoint, I know that soda pop and a variety of perhaps sugar flavored beverages will be offered. I appreciate this commission's focus on, on the nutritional components of things, and I think this discussion and the minutes will serve as documentation to the Park and Recs Board that this is part of, of what you are assigning to them. When I read the July 24th additions or changes to the contract, I took it as Mahaska was saying back to the city, this proposal is for 20-ounce vended bottled beverages, but we have to remember, I am afraid I'm going to say this wrong, bag in the box beverages are the concessions, and the concessionaire may choose to provide 12-ounce beverages or small beverages and multiple sizes, because when you're dispensing products, you're able to do that. So, from my standpoint, 12-ounce beverages, which would be my preference, won't be available all the times that the fieldhouse is operational, but may be available for, in the concessions. So, I'm not terribly surprised by this. My goal would be 24/7, but if that's, if that's the deal, and there is a lot to what the city manager's talking about, wearing Mahaska's hat and what they're coming forward with. In getting toward Commissioner Davis's discussions about what might also be offered, all of this is just talking about what's on the fieldhouse properties. We're fortunate in Salina to have some food trucks, maybe some beverage trucks that might sell those other kinds of products. They may not be located right on, in the fieldhouse parking lot or something like that, but it's a short walk across the street. So, again, I'm not overly concerned, I, I appreciate your focus on that and encouragement to those kind of businesses, to think of the fieldhouse as an opportunity, but, but that feels okay to me. My bigger concerns, I, it's just, I think those vending machines are a big advertisement, and so, keep that in mind, whether you're asking for fronts that are the, the big bottle of whatever advertisements, or whether you want a quieter front, so, so it's, it's not as obtrusive. And then the other thing I want to talk just briefly about is the revenue stream that will come. No one's talking about what prices will be charged for these products, and the cheapest I've seen for a 20-ounce bottle is right across the hall at the City County Building, $1.35. I believe Walmart is charging $1.50 outside the building, it's $1.68 inside, and you have to pay tax on that. So, it seems to me that the contract, and I was trying to go through it again, and I thought it gave all charging responsibility to Mahaska, but if we, if they charge $2 for a 20-ounce bottle of beverage, we've got our unit cost of, I think, $1.6 plus that $3 out of 24 rebate, so it really drops it down under below $1 a unit. And then when the city gets 25% revenue, that's 50 cents for the city and roughly a little bit more, or about the same amount for Mahaska as their profit. If they were to charge a three ounce, for $3 for that 20-ounce bottle, the unit cost would still remain the same, the city would get 75 cents, but Mahaska now all of a sudden gets $1.20 as their profit on that $3 bottle, because you have the dollar unit cost, 75 cents is going to the city, $1.20 is going to Mahaska. So, I just ask that you be aware of some of that. I don't know, and then there's just the hard swallow for me when it comes to water. A 20-ounce bottle is priced at 56, 56 cents per unit. It will likely be charged $2 or $3 a bottle, so the city will get its 50 cents or its 75 cents, leaving a real lion's share of profit for Mahaska. And that's sort of unfortunately how these things work. I don't particularly like it, because it does discourage water consumption. People will say, well, I was going to spend the $2 or $3 anyway, I might as well opt for what's healthy, and I applaud that, but any time you can encourage water consumption at a much more realistic price or no price, that would be what I would favor.
One thing I'd love to speak to about that, they do, the fieldhouse does have the water bottle fillers. I specifically looked for that last week, and so, as long as an athlete has a container to fill, they, they can fill it with cold water for free. Am I, am I right on that, Chris?
That's a positive going in then. Yeah, because I, I did stop by to see the vending machines, and the lady said, we have no vending machines, and I said, I know. But, yeah, I, I did see there was space for four, so. Thanks, thanks. Thank you for all of your investigative information.
I had actually written down the same question just when you asked it. Who actually does set the, the final price that's paid?
The machines, they're Mahaska's machines, so they're selling through their machines. The concessions, Mahaska doesn't operate concessions, they just provide the products, so the city or whomever else we might have there would be setting the price on the, for concessions. On the water, I don't disagree, we do have water... On the water, I don't disagree, we do have water fountains there, and because we're not selling the water, it's not in conflict. So water is actually free, and I'm going to, I'm going to give a plug to the water, because the city's water supply is regulated by EPA, the Environmental Protection Agency, and the standards are much more stringent than the FDA regulation of bottled water. And it's kind of funny, if you look at a lot of bottled water, it's actually provided by a public water supply entity, so. But the point is, is you have good water, and it's free, and so that option is always going to be there.
And you pay for all that public water.
Yeah, yeah. It is, I will, it is high-quality H2O.
The highest.
No sugar added.
Any other public comment? Okay.
Yeah, the question I had for staff is that, as we take action on this, if the determination is to take this from a three-year commitment to a two, from a five-year commitment to a two-year commitment, would we be acting on the contract, or just leaving that contract action to be taken place on an administrative level by the city manager? Would we direct city manager to enter into a three-year contract?
Yeah, let me throw this out. I would presume that you would agree, motion second, and maybe a vote to say, we'd like you to make it a three-year contract, and then administer it in accordance with your policy, and that's it, and we're done. But I'll turn to Greg logistically to make sure that lines up.
Well, because if we're doing it in accordance with the policy, the contract wouldn't be between the mayor and Mahaska, it'd be between city manager and Mahaska.
Right, that's correct.
Perhaps at the end of three years, we could take a look at it again, though, today.
The, the contract as written is for five years, and so if there's a desire to approve a contract on a, on a shorter term, then my understanding of the, the policy is that that could be approved on an administrative level, to the extent that the, the advertising rights and the value still comes in under $10,000.
Yeah. We do need to be clear, because Type B says it's less than three years in duration, and is less than $20,000 in value. So we're talking about $19,999 in value, or less, and two years, and one year less than the third year, so 364 days, so. We'd need to be sure and do that. But given that, it sounds like you could direct us to keep it in the terms of Type B, and then administer it for staff, or for me, it looks like in this case, me directly, I would sign off on the agreement and handle it administratively.
Okay. Would the official action need to be to deny the request?
I think it would, that's a good question. I don't think it would have to be in that form.
I think just the affirmative authorization that you all wish to direct would be appropriate.
Okay.
Okay. Are we ready for action?
Well, I'll make a motion. We'll see if it goes in the direction that I hope it might go.
Okay.
But I'll make a motion that we, that we direct staff to proceed with this contract to be in accordance with Type B of the policy, and that it be less than three, three years in duration, less than $20,000 in value, and direct staff to draft a contract with Mahaska to reflect those parameters.
Second.
Okay. Any other discussion?
My only other discussion, and this is for some time in the future, because I know that we are really spread very thin at Parks and Rec with being short on staff, and, and getting this facility launched and everything. But at some point in the future, I think it would be, from a policy perspective, I think it would be nice if maybe we could coordinate with USD 305, or the United Way, and come up with at least some philosophical food guidelines. I understand that, that's probably going, that's probably going to impact our bottom line, but I think it would, it would be nice to at least have those stated goals in place.
Okay. I have a motion. Go ahead.
I was going to say, we're a part of their wellness, and I'm going to get the title wrong. It's been a while since we've talked about it, but there's a wellness coalition with those community entities, and some others, and we're a part of that, too, and, and food is a part of that. So that would, that's helpful for us, we think about drafting something in the future.
Yeah, and I, yeah, I don't think that this is anything pressing, but I'm just saying, if something philosophical in the future, it might be nice to, to consult with our other, our fellow coalition members.
Yeah. And just a quick question for Erin Martin. Just a quick question. This would be able, you'd be able to expedite this quite quickly, since you pretty much have everything else.
We were just talking about what it would take, and I believe the, the current contract is in pretty good shape to transition to the three-year term. We'd need to change some dates, possibly some numbers, but otherwise, it would be a very quick turnaround.
Okay. Super, yeah. I just don't want to put the brakes too much on that, but, okay.
Okay. I have a motion, a second, to, would this still be Resolution 17748? No? Are we approving a resolution?
No, just a motion to direct staff.
To direct staff to execute contract?
In lieu of addressing the resolution, it would be to direct staff to administer the agreement in accordance with the policy, Type B.
Sounds good. I have a motion, a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Okay. We have no development business? Is there any other business? If not, I'll accept a motion to adjourn. So moved.
Second.
Those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Okay. We are adjourned.